Welcome everyone to the May 7th Planning Board Meeting. Today on the agenda, we have review minutes from April 16th. We have a sign application for the Stockbridge Golf Club at 6A Main Street. We have discussion of the inclusionary residential inclusionary housing bylaw. That's in our zoning bylaws, 6.31. And I hope you all can stay after the meeting tonight. We have a small celebration for Marie.
Oh.
So there. Okay, so has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from April 16th? I have one very, just one word that I want to request a change for. Does everybody else, any other? No? Okay, so the only change I have is in the in the second, second to last paragraph. It's, it's got resident population in the last 10 years has declined. And the median age has declined to age 60. It should be increased. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the minutes with that one change. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have the sign application for the Stockbridge Golf Club. Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is John Renzi. I work for Graphic Impact Signs, representing Stockbridge Golf Club, 6A Main Street.
Yeah, and do you want to chair?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
I used to do this thing. So what we have is we have a pre-existing sign that is a monument sign. It's about 100 yards off the Main Street. And the sign itself was granted under a previous zoning bylaw. And what we're looking to do is do a reface of the existing. We wanted to do something that's going to be attractive and fitting a committee. And so we came up with this. We've, from my understanding, we did like four or five of these different renderings before we landed on this one. And everybody seemed to really like the direction that we were going. So we're keeping the structure in place. And all we're doing is removing the letters. There's a lot of holes in the panel that's there. We're looking to reface it with this panel. It'll have a wood grain look with raised letters, very attractive. So we're not changing the height. We're well within the current zoning bylaws with the height. The square footage is a little bit more than what's allowed, but it is a pre-existing non-conforming sign. And based on the parameters of Supreme Judicial Court decision in 1996, Baron Chevrolet versus Tom and Danvers, we are allowed to reface the sign, by the way.
So I'm just going to put it out there that Town Council does not agree with you. And I'll let the board, you know, make a decision. But technically, because the sign is being changed, the understanding is that it should go to the ZBA. But I'm going to let the board discuss it and think about it. This is like the requests that we received before on Main Street. And I just wanted to clarify that.
What didn't they like about it? It was too big. What didn't they like about it?
Town Council? Technically, because this is a pre-existing, a non-conforming sign. And if you want to continue that, then technically, you don't make any changes at all. You just, you just maintain what's there. So I grant, this is more, this is more attractive than what's currently there. But this is a very large sign. It's 45 square feet. And in, this is the R2 district. What's allowed in the R2 is four square feet. So I just, you know, want to, you could, you could, you know, technically, you could keep this sign and maintain it. Or go to the ZBA for, I'm guessing they would approve it. I don't want to speak for them, but because it's the location, I'm guessing that they would go ahead and grant the request. But I just want to make sure the board has that information as they consider this, this application.
So are you saying either way, it's going to ZBA?
Technically, it should go to the ZBA. Because it's not being, this is the existing.
Right.
In order for it to be approved, it would need to be reviewed by the ZBA. If they're going with this, this is fine. And again, you know, I grant you, it's more attractive. But that, that is, that is the technicality of it.
How much bigger is it?
The panel's actually smaller than it is.
It's the same.
The panel is similar. It's just changed.
I mean, you're, it's the same size because you're
The existing one is the same. It's just what's inside and it's just a little bit smaller.
I mean, I remember when we did this one.
Do you?
Yeah. That's how old I am. It wouldn't have been allowed, but since they were keeping it the same size, we, we okayed it. But I mean, I know things have changed since then. So we could, we could fix our bylaw though, right, to allow that?
You know, I've talked to Michael about this. And your, his comment was, you're never going to get, the ZBA is, we're using the ZBA much more now with Michael here because of this increased understanding that you're never going to have a perfect zoning bylaw. And that's where the ZBA, that's the role of the ZBA. Is that, you know, for certain conditions, but then as well for a situation like this. And I think we had one on Route 7, Marie, the N, right?
The, the one, Stockbridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, they changed that.
They went to the ZBA.
They went to the ZBA.
Yeah, yeah.
And made a different sign.
So.
Speaker. So I go in front of a whole bunch of municipalities all over the Northeast, but primarily in Massachusetts. The way that the state looks at it is if you're changing the structure, then you need to go to the ZBA for an approval because you're modifying the structure. If you are simply changing the graphics within the structure and you're not changing a engineered support of any significance, then that is considered a maintenance modification. And in this particular case, we are not changing the structure. The structure is being maintained. The dimensional values are not changing. The footings in the ground are not changing. This is simply a reface. This is, this is like taking a a, a building that has clapboards and shutters, taking it off, repairing rotted sections and putting it back up. You're not going to make somebody go to the zoning board of appeals to go through the process of changing clapboards and shutters. If it were a structural thing where you're making a modification to the footprint of a building or adding a porch or something like that, that would justify the structural difference and then therefore go to the zoning board. So that's how, when I go to these boards and these hearings, and I go all over the state, the Cape, Boston, North Boston, West, everywhere, all small communities, large communities. And this seems to be the common denominator.
Again, that's not our Town Council's interpretation. So I'm going to let the, I think we have the information. And I'm going to let the board deliberate and/or make a decision. Thank you.
So to go to the ZBA is $300?
I'm not sure. Jennifer, ZBA is what, 300 or 500?
To go to the, to take it to the ZBA?
It's, yeah, it, it will run close to 500.
500?
Publishing and then the postage. I, I really don't know. I don't do it. It might be 300.
Somewhere between 300 and 500.
Right, but it is significant.
Is there a way we can do something about that?
Change the, the pricing?
I mean, we could approve it.
If we approve it.
And I think it's not a problem.
Well, I mean, I'm personally perfectly okay with approving this. The, you know, the question is like, you know, do we want to maintain the authority of the ZBA in this matter? Is that important? I'm not sure. I don't know.
Well, I think since we do a fair amount of signs, if we're going to start, this is the second one we've had like in a, I don't know, a month or so. It just may behoove us to try to tweak the, the sign bylaw to, to allow it, you know?
Yes.
And our, you know, just to say, you know, if the, if the, if it's a existing sign and you're not going to do anything except basically paint it or change the, the front of it, that we should allow it. I mean, I, because that's what we did with, with it before, so.
Because we don't have any grandfather language in there.
Yeah, well, really, you're not even supposed to use the terminology anymore.
So what?
Grandfathers are not, grandfathers are out.
In terms of, so with the terminology, we're supposed, the terminology we're supposed to use is pre-existing non-conformity? But what Donna has told me is that, so like, for example, the Red Lion Inn sign.
Yeah.
That's, is considered
You almost
I know. Pre-existing, non-conforming sign. And it would be like this. If they were to, if they were to, you know, they wanted to work on it, they would need to
Which they will eventually do.
They would need to maintain it. Well, but then you get into the question of, you know, are we supporting the four-square-foot requirement?
Right.
So it's a little bit, you know, I think it's a little bit potentially of a slippery slope.
Well, I kind of side with Gary about the idea of putting in like some language to support, you know, whatever graphic, you know, cosmetic alterations to pre-existing, non-conforming signs.
Okay.
I'm not sure that
How does everyone else feel about that?
Do that. I mean, if we can do that here, or we have to go to town meeting or something?
It's a process.
I feel like I should recuse myself because I'm a member down at the club. Can I, can I speak to the issue and not this sign?
I think if you're a member of the club, you know, either you recuse yourself, you should, I would recommend you recuse yourself and I would, I would just recuse. Yeah.
I think you all know where I stand.
I don't have a problem with it because he's, he's right. He's not changing the structure. He's not changing the sign, the size. They're, they're just updating the graphics. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I agree with that and I agree that we should somehow put language in because this is going to come up again. And we're going to have to go through this again.
I do too. And I think if we were to, honestly, I think if they had a four-foot sign, you'd never see it, you would get lost.
Yeah, for that space.
Yeah, it really is.
Even the new graphics, you'd be able to see better.
Right, right.
Because it's not downtown. It's, it's in the, it's in the little parking lot, yeah.
Back of a big parking.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to accept the sign as presented.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? And I'm going to, I'm going to be an A.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, so you're all set there.
But maybe we could put that on an agenda.
I'll, I'll put my, I'll talk to, um
I think it's just a sentence or two that we need that section.
Yeah.
And it would only be for non-conforming, pre-existing, sure.
Yes. Why?
Sign.
Yes. Maybe we can put that on the agenda.
They just send them there for that. When they're probably going to okay it anyway. But then again, I appreciate
Have a good night.
Bye. No, I understand. I just, I just like to keep it, keep it
Could they take us to
By the rules. Sorry?
Everybody can give a court. I think it'll be more than $500, so.
That's true.
All right, so next we have discussion of the, the residential inclusionary housing bylaw. Did you all have a chance to?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'm not sure that it's really widely known that with this bylaw, that DeSisto found a placeholder, you know, a way around, and Elm Court didn't. And I'm also not sure it's widely known that, let's see, where did I put it? That as a result, Elm Court will need to put in 2.6 million to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Now, the reason that, you know, I feel that, for me, this is a concern, is that Elm Court came in, they did what you want developers to do. They approached the town informally last summer to talk about a possible plan. And my feeling was they came in with a very nice plan that would have been good for Stockbridge and would have been good for the abutters. And as I understand it, nothing is happening at this point. And my feeling is that 2.6 million is a significant chunk of change for them to have to put into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I wasn't able to reach Linda Law to talk to her about this. But I think it's worth considering whether there might be something that we can do with this bylaw to build in more flexibility. These are, you know, two properties that have hung over the town for years. And I, for one, was very pleased to see the plan that they came in with and to think that finally, this property would have something viable going on there. So I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on, on the bylaw and the requirement, you know, for 2.6 million in this case, coming up, you know, coming out of their, their funding.
How do we know it's 2.6? I mean, we don't have a plan. We don't have a real plan in front of us knowing how many units they're putting in or how few units they're putting in. So that's a variable.
So based on the plan that Linda came in with informally, Michael asked Town Council to come up with the assessment that would be, that they would need to pay. And I don't know, Jennifer, would you be able to make copies of this?
Thank you.
And this is it.
I mean, chances are, it's going to be actually more. I mean, with the, the cost of everything, it's, that's, how old is that? That was a couple of years ago, right?
No, 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 this is, this is a recent assessment.
Okay.
Yeah. This is based on the plan that they discussed last summer.
Well, I mean, based on that, it's, it is what it is, right? I mean, I, and then who be, who takes charge of that money?
Affordable Housing
Affordable Housing Trust Committee.
You.
Not me. I'm just the secretary.
It's a seven-member committee and they're appointed by the select board.
In perpetuity, or do they switch out?
Well, they, they
No, they, they, they switch out.
They can switch, yeah, we have like a two or three year thing.
Like the finance committee, though.
Yeah.
I guess, I've never been on the finance
Well, nor I, but.
No, and they ask us whether we want to, if we want to maintain them, that's what we
I mean, one possibility is that, you know, in talking to Donna about this is that we could include wording that would allow for a waiver in part or in full, you know, depending on, depending on the context.
So where's the percentage?
Well, isn't there a waiver built into it anyways? I mean, it's either the money or it's, or they have to, or build the housing.
There's no waiver for the
Well, I guess it's an either-or, though, right?
There's no waiver for the amount that the developer needs to put in.
I thought it was one or the other.
It's either building or giving us money.
I think what Kate's saying is, but it's going to be, the money piece doesn't change. That's what you do with the money. Do you just give the money or do you build something?
Doesn't, regardless of what you do, there's nothing that takes into consideration, you know, extenuating circumstances and says, okay, you know, you, there's some flexibility here based on, you know, the context that would allow you to have a lower, a lower assessment.
So is it six, they would have to give six units and over
They have choices. So if you look at the wording, so is everybody on, if you go to page 94?
Oh, is it the car?
Oh, yes.
Of the bylaws?
My page is
Is there any bylaws?
It's 67.
Okay, what page is that? What page is that?
Page 94? 6.31?
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone, anyone turning on Zoom? Is there anyone to turn me off?
Yeah, the other
Okay.
Not mine.
So if you look at the table
I know you all wrote it. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not me. But I know it.
So 26 units would be two.
Two, all in lines.
So you'll see, development subject to this section shall provide at a minimum, minimum at the applicant's choice, one of the following. And then the first includes, you know, a number of units. That's one, A. And then B is provides for off-site. And then C is a cash payment equivalent to five times 80% of the annual median income as determined by the housing, what's HUD stand for again?
Housing urban
Housing urban development income limits, which includes Stockbridge for every 10 new units of market rate units. So that's where you get the 2.6 million. Yeah. So that's, you know, what I'm, I'm interested to know is if, if the, you as a board have any interest in adding wording that would provide some flexibility there.
Can I, can I ask, is this luxury housing that she's building?
It shouldn't matter.
It doesn't really, yeah.
It shouldn't matter.
It's just taking away from more of the affordable housing, that's all.
Well, that type of development isn't taking away necessarily, is it?
Well, it is if you're not going to pay into the Affordable Housing Trust. If we're going to waive it and then there's less stock for affordable. This, the reason it was written is so that there was a possibility that there would be some kind of funding for affordable housing. Whether it's to buy a house that's already built and it's being sold and it needs repair or just to buy it so that somebody else can actually live here. But when you continue to buy, you know, you continue to put up luxury housing, one, are the numbers of people who live here permanently go down on the second home where the luxury housing goes up.
How, how long has this language been in place?
About a year, since last town
Really? Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't have an issue with that. Well, I'd just look at the 2.6, if that's the number. I didn't hear a clear path forward from your committee.
Oh, we don't have a clear path yet. We're just at the beginning. And, you know, we're just at a housing production plan. It suggested that we offer five, you know, come up with five units a year for five years, 25 units. We have less than $300,000. It's not going to happen.
So
You know, and we need money from CPC, we need money from grants, we need money. We're going to get it all over. It's 2.6 isn't going to get us very far. So. And I'm sorry, DeSisto skirted around it. Because it does put them, what seems like
We keep going back
In some ways, I think it's
They didn't skirt around anything. They, that was in place. They merely reapplied and kept their current situation. That's not, they didn't skirt around anything.
They left their options open. And in some ways, you know, I say, it's a good thing they did because I, Wayne, you might be surprised to hear me say this, but frankly, with 2.6 coming off, now coming out of the funding, you're potentially going to end up with a cheaper product.
They're doing 76 units.
Who's doing 76 units?
Linda Law, that's what that was based on?
Can I see the form?
57, 57.
Yeah, 57.
Even so, 57.
And what's the, what's the total cost of that?
Right.
So they've got the total cost isn't shown here, but it's US Hensysborough, the annual median income, and then 80% based on the units. She's come up with five times 80% per 10 units, $430,000. And then 21 homes, 36 townhomes, total 57. Number of units needed, six. And then, so the number of units they would need to, affordable housing units they would need to do would be six. And then the payment in lieu of that is the 2.6. Yeah.
I thought I read that after 30 units, that it was half for every 10. Or was I just wrong?
Well, this is your bailiwick.
No, this is, I was talking about this.
Was it in this one? Or it wasn't in here, was it? It wasn't in our bylaws.
It's 10 to 19 units, minimum one dwelling unit, 20 to 29, two dwelling units, 30 units and up, minimum 10% of total unit count.
That's what I got here.
So
How would, do you think it might be worded to be more flexible for, I mean, would it be flexible for everyone or just the bigger properties?
Everyone. I mean, the bylaw is written such that 10 to 19 units is the threshold. So, you know, I think, you know, would probably be pretty simple wording. And Donna mentioned an example from another section, 6.28.4B. It's not, it's a different, you know, it's a different bylaw, but so it would, wouldn't be exactly the same, but, let's see. Okay, so here it is on page, for me, page 86. Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
The Board of Selectmen shall have the authority to waive specific provisions of Section 6.28.3. And that's relating to this example, not, not the one we're talking about. Upon a determination that a waiver would not be inconsistent with the purpose and intent of, and again, it's referencing, referencing a different section. So it's, you know, it's slightly, I think the wording we would use would probably be pretty simple, but it would be, you know, a little different to take into account the context.
But they would have the prerogative to do the housing instead of that if they chose to? They have that now.
They have that now, right?
Yes.
Do you want to think about it?
The money for housing doesn't come out of something like this. Where are they going to get it? How are we going to have affordable housing if How are we going to have affordable housing if we don't get it from something like this? I, I mean, I don't know.
Well, there's, um, you know.
I mean, we're tapping, we're looking at. We're tapping about all we can in terms of grants and those kinds of things. It sounded like from your, I mean, I know what you're saying. That's a huge chunk of change. But you've got 57 housing, whatever they are, upscale, I don't know, I don't know what kind of housing they're putting in, but that's an equivalent of six out of 57. And where else are we going to get money for affordable housing?
I've heard Patrick talk about grants and state grants.
But it's not going to pay for everything. And we need money from other places to say, look, this is where, we've got this coming in. They don't just give it to us. They want to see that other places in town are giving it to us because that makes it.
Well, what are the, I mean, what are the amounts of the state grants that are available?
I have absolutely no idea. This is, this is pretty, we just got this done. I mean, we don't know.
Yeah.
And do they have?
That's changed.
Can, do they, are they required to build those units on their property that?
No, I think there are two houses.
You can go elsewhere and locate and identify other property.
Even fix up a house that needs.
You, it's under section B, Wayne, constructor rehabilitate.
Okay.
Do it any way they want, but that has.
To me, it makes the most sense when, if a contractor's going to be here, that they would, if, if the town took the initiative and identified the properties. And that also opens the door for a negotiation where the, the guy has his, his workforce here and he can rehabilitate homes that are identified by the town. And that can be part of a negotiation that happens with.
Yes.
A developer.
That's a good.
That is part.
Yeah, so it says, "The offsite affordable housing units provided under this subsection must be comparable in finishes, amenities, total square footage, room size, and construction to that of the housing and the rest of the development."
So those are upscale. If you're going by that, then now you are not.
Well, that's why.
Affordable level, you're at an upscale.
So you give it to the Affordable Housing Trust and they put it into real affordable housing. That's, you can do that too, or you can do, I mean, there is the options. You've got that.
But aren't they, they're not held to that standard?
No.
Not if they give the money.
No, it's money.
But it's given money. But it's a lot of money. If they do it, they have to. If they build it.
Right, if they do.
But if they just give money.
So you wouldn't have that, then that wouldn't work for a contractor because he would then have to build it to those.
Right.
Standards, even if it's offsite.
Right.
Well, they could build, they could build similar housing offsite on a, you know, on a bare piece of property. But it would have to mimic what they just built. See, I think that takes the incentive away from.
They couldn't rehab something that's out there?
It says right here.
The wording kind of precludes it because it says there has to be the same square footage and.
I'll read it, I'm going to read it from the beginning. Okay? So construct, or this is one of the options. "Construct or rehabilitate one or more affordable housing units offsite that equal or exceed in construction cost, the average construction cost of the development's housing units. The offsite affordable housing units provided under this subsection must be comparable in finishes, amenities, total square footage, room size, and construction to that of the housing and the rest of the development." So.
I think it could be changed.
But that would have, I mean, you don't, as, you know, unfortunately, you can't start at the top when you're in the situation that some folks are. And it takes the incentive away.
That's right.
From doing that, which I think probably is the more likely scenario when a developer is going to make a choice.
They were probably trying to say you can't just put up a junkie fix over a house and not really fix it over. You got to make it really good. But they can't use this wording.
Right.
And say that. They need to change the wording and say that it has to come to a certain specs or something, you know, whatever.
Nowadays, the code is pretty strict.
Right. So they have to do it to code or something.
You can't do just the, you know, thrown together units.
So I think this sentence could be changed to make it work for a contractor and a client.
I mean, think about it, if they're building like 400 square foot places, you could take that and do two 200s or, you know, three 1500s or four 1,000 square inch units for, that's affordable. That would make much more sense than matching what they're doing.
So are they talking about like property that's in tax title doing all that?
That would be great.
Like that house under seven, you know, if someone could put money into that and make it look nice, they'd be snapped up like that.
Right, I know.
Yeah.
And we'd love to snap it up.
Well, it's privately owned, right?
Well, it's, they're trying, I think they're trying to find out. They've never been able to get these people. They don't respond.
I thought there was a meeting with them.
There was? Well, I haven't heard about it.
That's what I heard. I thought I heard that at watching an Affordable Housing Trust Committee meeting.
I'm too busy taking notes, I didn't hear.
Isn't tax title, taxes.
Yeah.
Gary, you're on the speakers.
Well, they're trying to.
Yeah.
Come up with the money, but I mean, it's way in arrears.
Okay.
It isn't any small task.
Frank Pressner's up past us.
All right. But there will be others.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's others.
All right, well, why don't, you know, why don't you read the bylaw and think about it? And just, you know, think about what you think. I, my concern is, the reason I, I bring this to you is that I just felt, wow, this is unfortunate that this project that looked very promising is now dead in the water.
Do we know it's because of this?
Again, I wasn't able to reach Linda.
I can't believe it's because of that.
I can't either.
But before we go off of it, what was your comment about possibly then having the units be cheaper? I didn't, you mean, this 2.6 would have the developer making less, not as nice?
Well, my concern is that.
I didn't understand what you were.
You know, one of the things she said to us when we met with her was, I mean, I liked her thinking about the property. And one of the things what she said was, "We just don't want to lose money here." And.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, too.
Typical.
So, well, they're not a nonprofit, you know, so I guess I just felt like we don't know because we haven't heard, they're not communicating with the town right now, so we don't know what's going on. But, you know, it.
I don't think that that's holding them back. I just don't, that's too, it's a lot of money to us. I don't think it's a lot of money to them.
I don't know about that.
Six units shouldn't.
Not sure that, you know, that.
Well, it'd be nice, it'd be nice to have a conversation with you. I think before we decide, you know, that that's what the reason is, if we should find out what it is. What is this holding them up? Because it may be just.
I'll see if I can get Mike to, you know, to reach out, reach out and see if he can find out. But in the meantime, what I'd like everyone to do is take a close read of the bylaw and just, you know, think, give it some thought. My feeling was that this was kind of rushed through. Last year, I was very much on the fence with this bylaw. And a year later, you know, seeing how it's played out, I have some concerns.
I feel like it was done rather quickly too.
Yeah.
It's very wordy.
Based on the state, I mean, I think this was happening around the state. This is not something that was totally written up by us. I think it's based on, they're doing it everywhere.
But the whole process was sort of brought up, you know, at the end of the, right before town meeting. And I felt like it was, we didn't really have a chance to, I think we just had one public, you know, one meeting on it and we didn't really have a chance to weigh the pros and cons. And I would have liked a little bit more time. You know, there were other dynamics at play and, but, you know, a year later, I think it would have been good to have a little more time with it before we made a decision on it. Got a little bit more chance to, you know, gather information like this, to understand it, like, you know, how it would play out. Of course, we couldn't know that.
Yeah, until something comes off concrete and you really see it in figures, like you just said, oh my gosh, it sounds good. You know, this, until you really have to put it to work.
Yeah, so.
Well, yeah, that's the thing.
You know, I mean, I don't know how you could have.
Right.
Really thought more about it until it actually comes up for, you know.
Nickel and dime, yeah.
But still, like I say, where else are you going to get the money unless you get it from something like this?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so take a close read and give it some thought and, you know, see if you have any suggestions about what might be worded differently. And with that, I just want to say, I know you don't want anything, Marie, but I'm just going to say a few words about Marie. Yeah.
It's Josh from Stepford.
Oh, yeah, Josh, did you want to speak?
Well, I've been for you.
Yeah, come on up.
Josh, 62 inner Laken Road. Is the, is this, you know, this tax or whatever you put on these properties, is just, is this if they just specifically want to put high-end housing in it? Or is this in conjunction, conjunction with high-end housing and resorts? Because those are two different things that's taking place. Those, you got two totally different dynamics that can arise.
So it's, Josh, let me open it up so I have, do I get this? So specifically, it address, it's based on unit count. Okay, so if you look in the zoning bylaw, 6.31, you'll see whether it's building, do building, a contractor building affordable units, or it's a cash, or it's a payment. It applies to 10, a minimum of 10 units.
Right, but that would apply, that would apply to the cottage estates.
Correct.
And then they would.
It could, it probably would.
The zoning for the cottage.
That's right.
So, I mean, if you were telling me that somebody just wanted to go in and build high-end housing, I don't see what the housing problem would be, other than wealthy people might buy more high-end units. If you're going to conjoin that with a resort and you're saying, two points, you know, you bring up $2.6 million, what is that, four or five houses in town? It's four, it's, you know, it'd end up being two and a half million, four or five houses.
If you're lucky.
I don't think it's.
You have 50 houses that line Church Street. You have at least 73 houses from 102 up until the Lenox Town Line. Most of those are before the boat ramp. If you go off every side road from 102 up to the boat ramp, you're up over 200 houses. In other words, you're within a mile, mile and a half distance or two miles distance of one property. Now, if you go back to the, what is it? It's the June 6, 2017 article by Clarence Fantos. He talks about Lenox using, losing the housing units. And from what I see is people are buying houses, they don't want to, you know, they're coming up here because there's just more than a thing to do for a day or two. You get second homeowners, they want to subsidize their housing by renting it out. They fight with the town. You have investors that come in, they want to take, and they want to buy houses for vacation rentals. In Great Barrington, a guy showed up at a meeting and said, hey, me and my business partner, two people own 43 vacation rental homes in Massachusetts, and three of them are in Great Barrington. And I wonder, gee, I wonder how many in Stockbridge. But my point is, if you're just putting housing, high-end housing on a property, and that's what they're going to do, I don't see that as a problem. If you're going to put extracurricular activities, which are basically for wealthy people, five or six houses in this town are going to look like nothing to 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 houses around these places going. Not all at once. Somebody's going to die, somebody can't buy their home, they're going to, it's going to be a second homeowner, it's going to be an investor. So I'm saying $2.6 million, that dynamic is nothing. You're, you're going to have to have a lot of money to keep it above a 10% threshold because once all those people start going out of the houses over time.
Well, here's, here's the thing, Josh. The plan that she, you know, she proposed last summer did not include the large hotel.
Right, I, I gathered that.
On, you know, to me.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just putting out the scenarios of what, if you have one scenario, five, six houses, $2.6 million, what goes on a property is, you know, rather than just have some high-end housing on it, wouldn't bother me. But you got a couple different dynamics going on with these properties because of the zoning.
I guess, you know, the concern I have is that we don't know exactly if she's, she still has a special permit at Elm Court, Linda Law does, to do the original plan.
Yeah.
Which, you know, was going to be an impact in that area because there was a large hotel tacked on to the back of the, you know, original historic structure, Elm Court.
Yeah, this is all.
So this was, so what she proposed last summer was significantly scaled down. And my concern is that because of this requirement for the 2.6 million, that she potentially now has to abandon a plan that I felt was extremely good for the town, as well as the butters, in favor of the original plan that I did not think was as favorable.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
You're talking equivalent of four, five houses, doesn't seem like that would be the reason to me, but.
I appear to have missed this meeting, but was the footprint of that addition onto the Elm Courthouse reduced in any way?
What, from when, from when to when? I don't.
Well, from what was reviewed.
Yeah, 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 considerably. Yeah, that.
It was like 96 rooms.
Oh, that was, that was.
An enormous shoebox.
That was more or less, I mean, they were, they were going to do something there, but that was gone.
Yeah.
Gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was the other developer.
Yeah, but she still has a permit to do that.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying that, well, well.
Yeah, so.
Just saying, historic preservation should see a new plan and approve it if they're moving it, you know.
But they're not, from what I hear.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. So, all right, well, there's, I think it's sort of confusing in some ways, but if you're interested, take a look at the bylaw and give it some thought. And if you want to put it on another agenda, let me know, or if you want to just email me individually, don't, don't email all because we have to watch out for open meeting law. But, you know, if you have additional thoughts, by all means, let me know. Okay? All right, Marie, this is the fun part. So we're going to have a little celebration for Marie. Marie joined planning board in 2017, right? And.
I don't know. I, I thought it was before that.
I got, I got this from Teri Malini. She said 2017 and that you were chair in 2019, 2019.
I was, yeah.
And then before that, you were the alternate to regional planning for many years, right?
Yes.
When nobody would go.
When nobody would go.
Marie would, Marie would go. So, yeah, so I just want to, everyone to congratulate Marie. And if you see Marie in town, please thank her for her service.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would just like to say a personal thank you also because I know you're involved in so many different things in our town. And you've always had such a great concern for the town. And you've always made your time available to go and do these things. And I so appreciate that. And I think you've done a great job here in so many other areas too, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you guys. I really have enjoyed the time on the planning board. It's been interesting. It's been educational. I've met, you know, a lot of great people. It's if, if you really want to know what's going on in town, you need to join a board or run. That's, you know, you really learn a lot and you. That's, you know, you really learn a lot and you enjoy your townwork when you know something about it. But now it's time for somebody else to take this seat, and I hope I've done the best I can for
You did.
All my decisions.
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, guys.
So I think, do I have a motion to adjourn so we can chow down?
So move. I didn't move, the last, my last favor.